Okay, we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
House Member Bowman?
Present.
House Member Farrelletto?
Here.
House Member Gullumbeck? He's present. Council Member Noakowski?
Present.
Council President Pridgen?
Here, active.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Present.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Present.
Council Member Wingo?
Present.
Council Member Wyatt?
Here.
Cormis present.
Thank you. May we stand for the pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our council chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
Thank you, Council President. It's my joy to be with the council again today. I have invited as the guest prayer, mutual friend of all of us, Bishop Emeritus Tommy Reed, from the Tabernacle, who is appropriately distanced from me even as we speak. So I will pivot to him for this afternoon's prayer for council session.
Thank you. It's my privilege to be with you and would you bow your heads and pray together in this very challenging time in our culture. Our Lord, we thank you for the wisdom that you've gathered together in this body of leaders. I pray that they each one will have wisdom to lead this great city, from the president of this council to every single member. Today, because of circumstances that we did not create, we will soon face the greatest challenges in the history of the leadership of this body. We will see this economy greatly challenged by lack of resources. And yet, you will see like we cannot many times see, the great resources around us. Help us, Lord, to feel, to see, and to discover your wisdom in the management of the city. And help us to recognize that you see, like we cannot see, the abundance around us. And give us wisdom to discover your abundance and give us wisdom to manage that abundance wisely. And out of the wisdom within us, because of your spirit within us, may we manage the city wisely, biblically, and under the leadership of a sovereign God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop Reed and Dr. Warner. It's good to see you, Bishop, since we have not been able to see each other for some time. It is good. And thank you for the most appropriate prayer over our city and our council.
Good to see you today.
Council members, any memorials? Council Member Joseph Gullumbeck Jr.
Thank you. Joe Giambra, Joseph Giambra, the policeman, the actor, the musician, the restaurateur, the Renaissance man from Buffalo, passed away this past week of the relations to the COVID pandemic. He's going to be very, very sorely missed by his family and friends. Also, our former Chief of Staff Paul Wolf's mother passed away from complications to the COVID as well, Barbara Booker. So I would hope that we remember them and their families in our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? All right. Seeing none, we remember Lucky Peterson. Lucky Peterson, we are the same age. I grew up with hearing Lucky Peterson's music, especially in the summer. I wasn't old enough to go in the bars, but if you were out in the neighborhood in the summertime, the doors to the bar of his parents would be open and you could hear Lucky Peterson and Hammond. And he was known all across the world. He's Buffalo's own. He did relocate, but he always belonged to Buffalo and was just here within, I believe, the last year. So we remember him. An architect, and I can't remember whether we talked about him last week, Robert Coles, who died at 90 years old. He not only designed, he designed many, many, many buildings, but some that this generation would remember is the Merriweather Library and how he designed that library to look and have the feel of an African village. And that's why you have all of the circles at the library. He also was one, was the designer of the UB Alumni Arena. And JFK, I'll tell this quick, quick, funny story. I did not know that Mr. Coles was the architect of JFK. When I was first elected, I wasn't a fan of how the outdoors looked. And he came to me on a different project that he was interested in making sure it got preserved. And as we were talking and he was asking me my plans, and I said, you know, that JFK, something has got to be done with that facade. And Mr. Cole looked at me across my desk and said, I designed JFK. Well, I kind of backed off a little bit on the, on the parts he designed and went instead for new lighting and those type of things. But a pioneer in the architect world and in Buffalo, one who was discouraged actually from becoming a council member, he tells the story by his teacher, who said there were no, there were no, there was nobody who was African American who was an architect. And he did it and really laid the groundwork for so many other architects and just people of color who were told that they couldn't be in certain professions. So we remember all of these, seeing no other. And of course, our essential workers who have been putting their lives on the line every single day and those who have given their life, whether in the military or not, since our last meeting. We pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'd ask that everybody would please mute if you can. We're getting a little bit of feedback. This special presentation by the President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. For several months now, the city of Buffalo, this nation, and our planet has been mired in a global health pandemic, which has taken the lives of hundreds of thousands of people, wreaked havoc on our global economy, and altered our way of life. However, if there has been one silver lining through all of this, it has been the heroic men and women who spend each and every day fighting the fight to keep us safe, to keep us fed, and to keep us informed. One group that has been beyond impressive are the men and women of the emergency medical services field. We have with us today a member of the EMS world, Mr. Warren Dens. Mr. Dens is a city of Buffalo resident who has spent 27 years servicing the city of Buffalo as a paramedic. In addition to that, he passionately assists the men and women of labor as a union steward with Teamsters Local 449. Also joining us on the call today is Mr. Kevin Drysdale, who's the Vice President and Business Agent for Teamsters Local 449, who represent the men and women who are our paramedics here in the city of Buffalo. Now, a couple of days ago, we wrapped up National EMS Week. So when better than to acknowledge and thank the men and women who are out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, ready to respond at a moment's notice to headaches, broken bones, heart and stroke conditions, you name it. When we need them, these men and women respond. They don't care where the call comes from. They don't care who the call is for. And I cannot thank them enough. And as if they didn't deserve our appreciation as it was, add to it the fact that they have been doing this without hesitation and without reservation during a global health pandemic. They responded calls without thinking of their well-being, or rather, what they need to do to ensure the well-being of the person who placed the call or for whomever the call was placed. They've done so without requesting any fanfare. They do so under the most stressful of conditions. So to Mr. Dens, to Mr. Drysdale, the men and women EMTs here in the city of Buffalo, and to EMS workers across the country, I want to congratulate you on National EMS Week. But most importantly, I want to thank you, not just as a city council member, but thank you as someone who's had loved ones require your services a number of times for all that you do on a daily basis. It takes a special person to do what you do, someone with a compassionate heart and compassionate soul. And during these uncertain times, if your presence isn't essential, I do not know what is. So as we conclude our celebration of National EMS Week, it is a great honor and privilege to recognize the members of the Buffalo EMS community for their immense efforts in delivering lifesaving care and compassion to the citizens of the city of Buffalo. So we applaud you and thank you because we know that because of your sacrifices, we are stronger, safer, and more resilient. So again, thank you for everything that you do on a daily basis. I cannot thank you enough. I'm pretty sure that I can speak for my colleagues on that end because it is incredibly impressive what you do. So I don't know if Mr. Dens or Mr. Drysdale would like to say anything at this time.
You're on mute. There you go. Chief of Staff, we still can't hear him. He's off mute. This is anything wrong?
He's probably using a different microphone. Mr. Drysdale, if you want to check on your mic settings, at this point, unfortunately, it is on your end. I can't change anything from here.
Is that corrected?
You're great. And then you went back to mute.
Okay, how's that?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. All right. I apologize. I'm a little new to this technology. That being said, I'll retract what I did originally start out to say. I certainly appreciate and thank everybody from the Buffalo City Comic Council for all you do for the city of Buffalo. And thank you for the opportunity to give us to share a little moment, Chris specifically, all the kind words you said. And I know they certainly are echoed throughout the community and we'll never get tired of hearing appreciation given to people that are so well-deserving, doing the job that they do for the city residents of Buffalo, New York. I have the proud privilege of knowing my comrade here, Mr. Dens. He's a, as Chris stated, he's a city of Buffalo resident. He works for the city by choice. He lives in the city, what he does. This is the guy that shows up at your house in time of need. And I know he's probably meant a few words, but I want to give him the opportunity to, you know, to say whatever he chooses at this point in time. And again, thank you for our opportunity today to share with you.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Scanlon, for recognizing. Was somebody trying to get in?
I would just like to say thank you very much for the recognition of my profession. And I hope to be able to work with that for months and decades. And like you say, you're very welcome for your thanks and your support for the state of our society. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, President Pro Tem, very, very appropriate in this, in these times and any time actually. But thank you.
Thank you all.
All righty. On a motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Ms. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on May 12, 2020 are approved. Council members, you had late files before. You have any objections to any late files? I'm not even sure if we have any on there. But I'll go through the routine anyway. Any objections? There are no objections. We will hear the entire agenda that is before us today, starting from the top.
Item number one, Declaration of State of Emergency.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Council Member Scanlon.
Item number two, ESG CV, a hapwa slash CV Annual Action Plan Amendment.
Motion to approve.
Second by Council Member what?
Council Member Bowman?
Yes.
Council Member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council Member Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Council Member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council Member Wingo?
Yes.
Council Member Wyatt?
Yes.
Next item.
Item number three, April 2020 Cash Flow Report.
Motion is sent to finance items three and four.
Second by Council Member Noakowski.
Item number five, Buffalo Water Board Management Agreement.
Motion to approve items five through, you can keep scrolling down. Five through 24.
Second by Council Members Farrelletto?
Council Member Bowman?
Yes.
Council Member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council Member Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Council Member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council Member Wingo?
Yes.
Council Member Wyatt?
Yes.
On that item, and I should have spoke beforehand, but it's just given an observation I gave in caucus on the water. And I think it's so important that people know what we just voted on because this is huge that our water department is adding in this contract to ensure that there is a community person who is available to the community. That's really, really big. So that though the Commissioner, Commissioner Finn is stretched at every, on every arm. But to be able to have somebody who just specializes in the water department is so very important. And it also includes the continuance of the lead line removal program and those type of things that are important to the health and the welfare of people. And so I do want to thank those who are in charge over at the Water Authority because they have, and I know particularly some problems in the Fruit Belt and another resolution is coming up to look at that. I'll comment on later. But I wanted to make the public aware how big of a deal this contract is and especially in serving our constituents. Next item.
Item number 25, Appoint Carpenter.
Motion to send to civil service items 25 through 29.
Second by Council Member what?
Item number 30, Foodster License 1560 South Park.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Council Member Scanlon.
Item number 31, Contract Extension for Burn National.
Motion to approve items 31 through 35.
Second by Council Member Gullumbeck.
Council Member Bowman?
Yes.
Council Member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council Member Gullumbeck?
Yes.
Council Member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council Member Wingo?
Yes.
Council Member Wyatt?
Yes.
Next item.
Item number 36, Liquor License Notice 505 Ellicott.
Motion, motion, which one are we at? We're 36. Motion to receive and file items 36 through 44.
Second by Council Member Gullumbeck.
Council Member Majority Leader Rivera, item 44 is just mislabeled. That's actually going to be sent to finance.
Oh, so there is a receive and file items 36 through 43?
Correct.
Item 44 is going to finance.
Yes. All right. So we'll just take item up to 43 first. And we'll call item 44. So we'll amend that to just ensure that we only go into 43 with the same move and second, and then we'll hear item 44. Clerk?
Item number?
44.
Inviting B F S A to Finance Committee.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Council Member Wyatt. And just, and it'll be noted at the end, if there is a response from the, from the B F S A before Tuesday, that they can make it Tuesday, there will be a finance committee. If there is not, that will be delayed until the sponsor gets a response.
Thank you, sir.
Next item.
Submissions list, Finance Committee, item number one, amend annual action plan.
Motion to approve.
Second by Council Member Noakowski?
Council Member Bowman?
Yes.
Council Member Farrelletto?
Yes.
Council Member Gullumbeck? Council Member Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Council Member Wingo?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Next item.
Resolutions, item number 45, Restaurant Outdoor Seating.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, second by Council Member Farrelletto.
Council, Council Members, may I ask that in regards to this going to the table for full council, can this be sent to a committee? Because normally, the only thing that goes to full councils like budget, things like that, as far as the table items.
The sponsor, what would you like for this, happen with this item?
Thank you. Um, we, if you want to send it to a committee and then we take it back, that would be fine. First, I just want to thank all my colleagues for supporting this. I think there will have to be some changes to this because some of the changes have, I believe, have to be done in an ordinance amendment, which deal with changing, with the changing of some of the processes. I fully anticipate to have something back to the council by the end of this week on it. And again, I want to thank all of my colleagues on the council for having the best interest of the restaurants in the city of Buffalo that have gone through some very challenging times in trying to help them out when phase three reopen. So thank you to all of my colleagues.
Thank you, Joel. Council Member Scanlon?
Thank you, Council President. I know I said this during caucus, but I just wanted to state it again. I think it's important to state. I wanted to thank Council Member Farrelletto, not just for putting forth this resolution and the forthcoming ordinance amendment, but also working the phones on this, getting everyone on the same page at different levels of government. All of us are so very familiar with the restaurants, the restaurateurs in our districts and how the number of people that they employ and just how important they are to the vitality in the city of Buffalo. And upon reopening and this slow opening, it's imperative that we give them as much capacity as possible to limit the damage to their bottom line so they can keep people working and keep things going here in the city of Buffalo and moving in the right direction. So I just, I wanted to applaud and thank Council Member Farrelletto again for that.
Yeah, thank you. Council Member Noakowski?
I also want to thank my colleague, Council Member Farrelletto, too, that took a lot of fortitude and forward thinking through this pandemic of how we can appropriately move forward for our business districts. And I just want to thank him as well.
All righty. And I'm joining the chorus and thanking him for this leadership. You know, when we think about restaurants, some people only think about downtown or certain sides of town. But we've got small restaurants on the, all over the city, actually, that really need this type of legislation that Council Member Farrelletto has led the charge on so that they don't have to come back to the council to be able to open up in their parking lot or open up on the safely in areas. I won't go into all those areas because I know that he is working on that. But I 100% support it. And Joel, I know you have been, Councilman Farrelletto, I know you've been on the phone with restaurants, as Council Member Scanlon said. And you've talked to people, you've walked this thing through. The only reason I did table it, and I know we normally, I mean, not that I tabled it, that I wanted to table it at the council is for this. If we send it to committee, it gives the impression that we're going to discuss it in a committee. And I think that because we, this needs to happen, if it needs to happen by next council meeting, I don't want to have to discharge it out of a committee. I want it to be right there on the table at the council because it is so COVID-related. So I am okay. It's not a break of the rules, but I mean, it's a break of the norm, leaving it right there. So we know it's coming right back to this council in no less than two weeks and not going to a committee, kind of, and then we got to discharge it. I'm okay with just leaving it right there on the council's agenda because of the COVID relationship and how important this is to businesses and to our constituents. I don't want to say congratulations too early, but I do want to say congratulations, Councilman Farrelletto. Thank you for leading us in this direction.
Thank you.
No one else? All righty.
Item number 46, Appoint Youth Advisory Member.
Motion to adopt items 46 through 49.
Second by President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Announced.
Sorry, if somebody says something, you're not showing on my screen.
Yeah. Wingo.
Council Member Wingo. And staff, I really need to be able to see, or you're going to have to let me know when you take, go to that side screen, please, of who's trying to be acknowledged. Council Member Wingo, you had a floor.
Yes, sir. I would just like to submit the amendment to item 49 as we stated before the meeting to read. So I don't know if we need to make a motion to rescind that motion, then to adopt it the way that we amended or?
No, no, you can go ahead and read the amendment into the record and then we'll, we'll adjust what we need to adjust.
All right. So the amendment, and I want to thank Council Member Rashid N C Wyatt for agreeing to the amendment. Let me see, the amendment reads as follows. Number one, the resolve is respectfully requests partnership with the county administration to strongly encourage the recruitment and consider for hire unemployed Buffalo residents to be employed as contact. Jim just shared the screen and I lost it. Here you go. To be employed as contact tracing workers with the city of Buffalo residents' history to ensure contact tracers have an understanding of the dynamics of the neighborhoods they will be working with in order to properly and fully engage in contact tracing to fight COVID-19. And that, sir, would be the amendment.
All right. And I know that there was discussion with the sponsor, sponsor, Council Member Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for supporting and being a co-sponsor of this item as well. And I want to thank Dr. Levon Ansari from the Community Health Center. She's the CEO for even giving me this idea because when we had conversation about contact tracing and the benefits of it, she talked about certain neighborhoods and making sure we have people in those neighborhoods, sort of like the Kenfield-Langfield, that are able to have contract tracers to be effective because they're familiar with that neighborhood. So for any community, you want people that are familiar with that community to kind of assist in making this an effective process. And I know with the governor pressing issue, making sure that we have as many contract tracers as possible, I want to be on the forefront and make it certain that all communities are representative. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And Council Member Wingo, did you want to be added to that? You stated that earlier?
Yes.
Okay. Please add Council Member Wingo to that resolution. Next item.
Announcement of committee meetings. No committee scheduled at this time. As stated earlier, there may be a finance committee based upon a response from B F S A on item number 44 before Tuesday, June 2, 2020.
Let's go ahead and read when that committee meeting would be so that the public would be aware and where they can find out in case we do have that committee meeting.
So the committee meeting for finance will be Tuesday, June 2, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. And they will be able to find it at www.facebook.com/bflo/cc as well as the city website.
Thank you. Council Member, am I missing anything? Any announcements for your district?
One thing, Councilman, Council President?
Yes, Council Member Wingo?
I would like to just make sure that all of the folks in the Masson District know that if you are part of a block club or not, or if you are a senior or disabled, we have been gifted and provided with plenty of face masks that we will try to ensure we efficiently disseminate to, well, disperse, I'm sorry, to all of the folks in Masson District. And if you call the office and please leave us a voicemail, we will do our very best to make sure that you get those masks as well. So we're trying to use every venue, every opportunity that we possibly can to get these face masks out. So again, if you are a senior citizen or if you are disabled and you are in need of face masks, please call the Masson District Office at 851-5145. And if you are a block club who need face masks for your block club residents, please give my office a call. Again, that number is 851-5145. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Member Noakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I also just want to make everyone aware that the Buffalo Police Department C District will be hosting a food giveaway. But right now, they are in need of donations in order to have a giveaway. And they are accepting donations at their headquarters, which is at 693 East Ferry Street, Buffalo, New York. And you can call ahead at 851-4412 and let them know that you will be dropping out food. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, Council Member Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just want to invite the residents of the city of Buffalo, for those high school students who unfortunately will not be going through their formal graduation, that we will be doing a drive-through graduation on UB South Campus on June 6 at 2:00 p.m. And if you go to my Facebook page, you will see the info. And if you go to my Facebook page, you will see the information where you can send your picture and your graduation date. And I like that information, um, so that we can be celebrated. It's, it's actually overflowing, I'm doubling the number of people. And we're looking for a tremendous turnout because we want to celebrate our young people. They've worked so hard and this is a disappointing time, but we want to take, take those lemons and make some lemonade, um, so that we can celebrate them and they can drive their cars through and they can have them kidded out and they're going to get pictures that they can take off our Facebook page. Um, but we just want to try to be a help, um, to encourage these young people that this is just a moment in time and that they will succeed and they will continue to be successful and we will celebrate them on June sixth at two PM South Campus. Thank you.
Great work. Anyone else?
I have one announcement, uh, Council President. I'm out. I would like to wish a fun and happy retirement to Russell Payne, a city employee at the city clerk and record management office. His last day is Friday, May twenty ninth. He has worked for the city for over twenty-four years. He is a Delaware district resident. We are so proud and happy for you, Russ. You couldn't retire at a better time with this quarantine and COVID nineteen. We wishing you nothing but the best on behalf of the city clerk's office and records management. Job well done. Don't forget to wish us Happy New Year's on July first. Thank you.
And he, um, you barely, I've, I've been here ten years and I, I don't think I've seen him more than twice. Um, cause he just stays, uh, and does his job and, and has served this city well. Um, and sometimes it's the people you don't see the most that do the most. Uh, and so, uh, happy retirement. Um, it is a jealous moment, uh, to hear, uh, of his retirement. Um, I also forgot to announce the passing of Stephen Young, uh, who is the father of Hope Young Watkins, uh, Watkins, who is the head of our, uh, real estate division. So I wanted to make sure you keep that up. Yeah. All right, council member Gullumbeck.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to piggyback on, uh, Russell Payne's retirement. I will be fortunate enough to continue to see him on a regular basis because he works, uh, evenings at the Elaine M. Panty Library, formerly the Riverside Library on Tonawanda Street. So, uh, I would see him, I probably saw him more than the Delaware District Councilman because he would be there two or three times a week. And we would have block club meetings there. I was a friend of the Riverside Library and so on and so forth. But, um, I always appreciated Russ would ride his bike to and from work. And whenever I would go in, he'd hand me a list and he would say, you got these problems on Howell, you got these problems on Hewitt, you got these problems on Prairie. Um, and I did appreciate it as we all do because by people giving us that information, it helps us to stay on top of things. So I wish him well, uh, also, and I'm sure, as I said, I'll still see him in Riverside. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yep, one more thing. My staff is going crazy, uh, because I forgot to make two announcements. Uh, first of all, uh, one is this coming Saturday at ten AM at the Delaware Writer's Center, we will be giving away more masks at the Delaware Writer's Center at ten o'clock AM. Uh, and then on June fourth, we will have, I believe, our third town hall for, for the Masson District of the year. We'll have our third town hall, this will be virtual though, for this year at five thirty to seven o'clock PM, our third town hall meeting for this year, June fourth. So if you are interested in logging on, please, people log on so that we can all, uh, talk about the issues that are of importance to you. Thank you for that time.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no one else's hand up and hearing no one else. Majority leader?
Motion to adjourn.
And my council member Wingo.